I'd like to bring to order the Town Council meeting in North Branford, Connecticut, March 21st, 2023 at 7:03 PM. Do a sweep and a flag.
I would just to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and Deputy Mayor, now.
Here.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Dinah.
Here.
Councilor Bowden.
Here.
Councilor Mace.
Here.
Councilor Palladino.
Here.
And Councilor Paliccia.
Here.
Okay, Minister, lead your meeting.
Make a motion to approve the March 7th WPCA and Town Council meeting. So good, that's second.
On favor? Aye. Stand.
I did, thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move item five, community events and presentations, up to before item three.
Sorry. Any discussion? All? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I have two amendments to the agenda. One is on item seven, reappointments. So I'd like to add seven N, the reappointment of Stephen Scavo as an alternate to planning and zoning. And also add item nine H, discussion and action on the approved budget schedule. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Can I ask for the addition? Do you have a term fee?
Yes. Five thirty-one twenty-five.
Okay. So we're already to the community events, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a presentation of a plaque to William Di Matteo for eighteen years of service as a equipment mechanic at Public Works.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Would like to ask our Public Works Director Fran Marola to give you a little discussion about Bill Di Matteo and his service to the town, ahead of our presenting a plaque with him honoring his service tonight.
Yeah, so Bill Di Matteo, he was a mechanic, obviously, for eighteen years. You know, nobody realizes what goes on in Public Works when you have storms, and it's not just about fixing cars and trucks, you know. I was trying to think back on what to say about Bill, but I, he, great mechanic, a great guy. He was always there for me. The, you know, you think about that big storm he had, the forty-two inches, and the whole group all got together. We were trying to figure out how we were going to open roads up and push the snow back, and, you know, the whole mechanic shop, including Bill, we made wing plows during the storm to go and load her so that we can get out there and, you know, get the roads opened up. And besides just changing oil and just doing routine maintenance, there's a lot that goes in, a lot of fabrication. We built trucks together. So it's been a great ride for Bill. And I remember when Bill, we hired him, and I always said, I was going to say this when he rose retired, but his first week, you know, you just, you got a new guy that comes in, you kind of just beat him a little work and everything, and he comes into my office and says, "Are you sure you're going to have enough work for me the next week?" Begs now. "Can you stop?" Just a great employee that we had, or we still have, for a couple more days anyway, but just like to thank him for his eighteen years of service and great job.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to add anything?
I want to say, I want to say something.
Let me get all the guys prepared.
It's me that you're, I just wanted to tell everybody in this town and all you guys that I worked with all these years, it was a new experience because I always worked in the private industry, and I never met a bunch, a piece of, these guys are, they're all a piece of work, but all dedicated, they're the one thing, it's a one big family. And I'm humbled to be here because I didn't, I didn't work all my life for somebody to give me a plaque or put me in front of everybody because, you know, well, you know me from back in Milford area lift and stuff, but it's just a way of life to go to work every day and do your job. And it's been quite the interesting road, and it's kind of weird, it's kind of nervous, I'm moving and I'm going to get out of my steel toe boots and try to change, change a little bit because my knees are beat, but I'm going to miss everybody here also. And everybody brought, brought to the table something unique with everybody, you know, good or bad. There's, they're all work hard, and I just appreciate everybody in the town for hiring me and Fran being my boss and all you guys that. Thank you.
He's got it right up there at the front.
Thanks for yourself. So the chair of flip flops and a tank top, and you're done.
Roger.
You can first.
Cheese!
I know. They're all about it. Somebody's going to make it.
Ready on three, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you.
Everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. Okay. That didn't take long.
No one ever wants to stay from my report.
The good parts are coming up.
Thank you.
I always stay for it, Mike.
You do, and I appreciate that so much.
All right. Onto regular Town Council meeting. Reports of commission, board, committee boards and commissions. A, Economic Development Commission.
Okay, I was unable to attend the economic development on March 6th, but I do have the minutes. Couple things that were in there that were good. They had a guest speaker, Dee Jacobs, from Shoreline Chamber of Commerce. Annual awards were held on February 21st, where they addressed workforce issues like childcare, transportation, housing. But of note, February was also the largest new membership month, bringing the total number of North Branford businesses to thirty-six. Newest member being Shoreline Autobody. And otherwise, they also had a guest in Bonnie Samansky, talking about the destination North Branford video on YouTube needing a refresh, and a lot of new things coming into town, the new high school, Milpon Tavern, et cetera. They're going to be looking for someone from the town to take over, like a student, young resident, to talk about some highlights, to really kind of update what it's all about living in North Branford and the school system. And Town Manager attended and reported that the EDC Coordinator position rolled into the part-time Assistant Town Manager, and that there's a few potential applicants hoping to have it filled by mid-April.
Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Rec did not meet in February, and their next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 20th.
Okay, thank you. Police Commission?
The Police Commission met on March 13th. It was shared with us that the police facility project is coming along very well, and they're having, every two weeks they have an update with the contractor. The Commission also reviewed and approved the Police Department proposed budget for 2324, but I think the most interesting thing is that Deputy Chief will be applying for what's called a COPS Department of Justice Hiring Grant to help supplement the cost of new hires. The grant will pay seventy-five percent of the salary costs for each officer for three years, which is pretty good, I think. The federal government has committed to $125,000 total for the three-year period per officer. The town is required to pay twenty-five percent match and retain the officer for at least five years. So the grant deadline is May 20, 2023, and Deputy Lovelace expects a response by the summer. That would be wonderful if he gets that for us, so I'll try to keep you guys informed as he works on that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Fire Commission?
Basically, you guys, the last meeting that we're still talking about, budgetary stuff, which they made their presentation last week, so you brought up speed on that. I just want to say how proud I am of the Fire Department with the awards that we've handed out here for the service that they provided, as well as previous ones that were provided to members at the Fire Commission meeting. And then more recently, Yale Center for EMS recognized a few of our members for, I forgot my glasses, so I apologize, but.
They're just cheaters.
They're my color. They were alerted to cardiac catheterization lab, and the patient was, ended up being discharged back home. And recognized was EMT AJ Cagiano, I hope I said that right, and paramedic Justin Wilbur, as well as paramedic Brianna Paquette, and EMT John Delfino. Again, paramedics Daniel Ortiz and John McFarland as well. And just goes to show, we may be a volunteer, thank you very much, Michelle, we may be a volunteer Fire Department, but our members are working very hard and continue to do a great job, and I'm very happy that they continue to get recognized, so.
Thank you. Planning and zoning was canceled. Finance Subcommittee?
Finance Subcommittee, because we're meeting every Tuesday night for the next couple of weeks, Finance Subcommittee did not meet last week, but the items that we would have discussed are on the agenda for tonight, which is ARPA project cost revisions and contingency appropriation in the financial report, so we'll be discussing those later.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee?
Yeah, I have a report that I'd like to read. The current status of the Public Safety Communication System implementation is in progress, continues to move forward and to reach the markers set forth by the team. The tower cabinets and the technology are currently being configured to meet the town's needs. Coordination of river services and electrical services will be on site next week. Affordable radios will be issued to police personnel within the next two weeks. The Fire Department radios are currently being scheduled for implementation to their apparatus, and the team continues to finalize their final full rollout. At this time, there are no deficiencies or delays, the project continues to inform it and is still under budget at this time. That's it.
Thank you, Mary. And finally, CIWWA?
That meeting is tomorrow night.
Okay. Okay, move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, there's the Town Council. I'm pleased to say that we're nearing completion on the design for the new town website. This week, I emailed the Town Council a link to the current draft of the site so that members could get a preview of what's to come and review the work that we've done so far. Right now, the site is under review by each town department to ensure the site carries all of the content they need in the sections that are their own real estate. Again, I want to thank Jess Cave, our newly christened webmaster, Dennis Pino and Anthony Esposito for the work they have been putting into the site to make it first-rate and ready for a seamless launch, which we expect to take place on schedule by the end of the month.
I will tell you that I did it on my mobile device, the link that you sent, and it looked nice. I mean, so far from what I could get to and stuff.
Head and shoulders above what we currently have.
Yeah, the current site, you know, when you go on it mobile, it's a complete crash.
And it's really user-friendly, which I think is important.
Right, yeah. That was the whole, the whole design, user design friendly, and it's a lot more intuitive, so we're excited about that, so thank you. The rescheduled, long-awaited ribbon cutting at the solar farm at Page Farm on Forest Road took place last Thursday, March 16th, followed by a reception at Stewards Land Brewery. I was pleased to join Mayor McMillan, Councilor Angeloni, Altus Power Managing Director Sean Rubin, other representatives from Altus, our Economic Development Commission Co-Chairs Liz Kaplan and Melissa Pentelio, Shoreline Chamber of Commerce Director Dee Jacobs, and former Economic Development Supervisor Roger Solway, for the event celebrating the public-private partnership between Altus and North Branford that will produce 3.2 million kilowatt-hours of electricity through 6,000 solar arrays on ten acres, providing North Branford with roughly ninety to $120,000 per year in savings on energy costs. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome two new businesses to North Branford, both on Commerce Drive. Defib Tech LLC, a large manufacturer of defibrillators used in schools, colleges, public buildings and workplace locations, that will use their new 16,000-square-foot location for warehousing and distribution. And Bright Right Electrical Services LLC, they'll be using their 2,800-square-foot location as a new home for their business providing electrical installations, upgrades, and specialty lighting for commercial and residential customers. Both businesses come to us from Branford, and I have already extended a warm North Branford welcome to them both. Robert Benko, the owner of Bright Right, actually grew up in Northford and is excited to be back in the community, and they'll be having an open house, and we're going to be setting up a ribbon cutting event with them hopefully in the near future. The previously scheduled recycling event, which had been planned for Saturday, March 4th, was, what was canceled due to the heavy rains we received that day, has been rescheduled for this Saturday, March 25th. The drop-off event is at Public Works Headquarters, 290 Forest Road, from 9:00 AM until noon. Take-Two Recycling is collecting electronics, including TVs, computers, small appliances, and almost anything that has a plug. They cannot accept smoke detectors, air conditioners, or dehumidifiers. They'll be taking the mattresses and box springs that are clean and dry, and batteries for used, and used oil for free. There is a small fee for recycling propane tanks in reusable condition. One pound is a dollar. Five, 10, and 20 pounds is $3. Thirty and 40 pounds is $5 cash only. Park and Recreation Senior Center will be hosting their family game night and trivia on Friday, March 31st, 6:30 to 8:30 at Stanley T. Williams Community Center. You can register at nbrecreation.com. Admission is $5 a person. Under eighteen are free. There's competition and prizes for participants, which should register by March 24th. And the Economic Development Commission, in conjunction with the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, is hosting the annual State of the Town event on Thursday, March 23rd, here at Town Hall at the Council Chambers, from 5:00 to 6:30. Featured speakers will include Lindy Lee Gold from the State Department of Economic Development, local logic planners Lauren and Nick Green, Dee Jacob at the Shoreline Chamber, our Town Planner David Perkins, and myself. The event is open to the public, and we ask for planning purposes of those wishing to attend. RSVP to Gina in my office, she can reach that 203-484-6000, or executive secretary at townofnorthbranfordct.com. That concludes my report on general updates.
Okay. Chairman, Project Building Committee?
For the Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the construction is slated to begin on the Board of Education's side of the building on or about April 7th, depending on the weather, and the trim color was selected to match Totucket Valley Elementary School. The Police Department and EOC, the Commissioning Agent RFP, has been awarded to IES. Site work at the location continues. North Branford Intermediate School, the project has been advertised with a scheduled opening date of April 5th. North Branford High School, the temporary certificate of occupancy is still pending. The accumulated punch list is being worked through, and it is anticipated that students should be able to start in the new school on April 17th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Five minutes. Citizens and Statements and Petitions and Correspondence?
Are you going to do the public hearing first?
Uh, no, because that's at 7:30, Bill. And you're probably just about a minute, right?
Okay, Bill Sevastin, 43 Sunny Side Drive. A big thanks to the Senior Senator, Park and Rec, for a nice job on the St. Patty's Day. I was doing nice lunching, it's always, I would try to get there in those days when they have big crowds, especially, besides the chef and the crew there, the volunteers came in to serve. Thanks, thanks a lot. Mike just mentioned about the E-Ways, that thing we canceled two weeks ago, it was a tricky situation. I got with Dane during the week and put our heads together, and we canceled it early only because it couldn't have really been a whole ball of rocks with the people and the Public Works guys out plowing, you know, because early in the week, that's what the situation was. But I just want to mention this, and please, this is really for informational purposes. We asked, also, I asked, that we put it on the reverse 911. Well, it didn't get there, and I'm not going to believe you the reason why, but, you know, the code red says it's obviously for emergencies and important community events. You can argue that any waste of air is important, but it was important because we usually have 160 cows coming in, so if it was an icy situation without a cancellation, it could have been a problem. And the only other point on that was, Dan had that digital sign turned, you know, with the cancellation, and we put it on social media, but the people on the Northford side of town that don't travel 22, I think some of them didn't get the message because there's a whole pile of electronics at the doors. So in the future, you know, you could probably use that same situation and maybe embellish it with something else. Yes, we have to cancel this, but a reminder, put batteries in your smoke detector, embellish it with something else, or it just doesn't, you know, out of place. But that's all for that. Thanks again. So we're looking forward to this weekend, we got rain again. I said, it was a learning experience for me, because I never knew about the company that does it. I was one of three on the committee that was in charge yesterday. So I'm saying, did they come out in a snowstorm? So I really never got a straight answer, they, they work in the rain, we'll see it this Saturday. Earth day, there's a little thing by the desk, it's sort of a little memo that Mike put in your package there, and it's about Earth day, you know, on that committee, and it was just a little, it's more for information. I was asking Mike if I could approach the town departments, the ones that are listed, just to see if we could get a little more input from them, especially now because you got two or three projects, big projects, going in the town, and that would be a good day for any residents to ask their questions. You know, we do this Earth day thing on Little League Opening Day, we, we only hope to grab the people as they come off the field after the ceremony for 20 minutes, we'll have some coffee there, you get a crush, a Kona from, you know, everybody gets a, we have some displays there and recycled stuff, but it's a quick thing, but we, we try to do the dip in every year. We gave away sunflowers last year, and it was pretty good. We gave away about eighty-six back. So we're looking to do something different. By the way, we're looking for volunteers for this, so if any of you is available that morning, it's only about an hour's worth of time, if you want to be there, just answer questions, hand out a flyer or two, that's, that'd be helpful. You know, speaking about, there are a lot of reappointments on the, on the agenda for tonight, but you guys know it or not, I think it should be out there, but way down, like two people on our committee, we've had a continuous recycle agenda, the tax at times, and not getting any response, so, you know, most of the appointments come through the, through the political process, and we've got some people, we need some people, and I'm looking to go back to alter them. So that's Earth day, and I was wondering about the, Mike gave me some information that the tax relief ordinance you're working on, I guess we're going to take care of it a little later in the month, getting the budget underway. Hopefully, we get it done, so it's starting to go into effect by this July. And just as a side note, at the, at the lunch last Friday, I was talking to the guy next to me, because he knows I come to the meetings and I know what's going on, so I was telling him about the tax relief process. And all of a sudden, a woman across the table hands me a petition, so there's about sixty names on a petition that I told him to get over here, so it's not just me talking about it. And I see the agenda come out really late today, but you're going to be talking about John's contract again, I'm not, I won't speak for the contract, but I'm here, if you got a question or two, I could probably answer it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We have a public hearing, we're going to open up here at 7:30 now. Proposed ordinance number 2023-3 pursuant to C7-3, Purchasing Agent, and proposed ordinance 2023-4 pursuant to C7-4, Director of Social Services.
Okay, and so I'd like to make a motion to open, well, first I'll read the public hearing, the notice of public hearing. So there were two separate notices of the public hearing. The wording is the same except for where the ordinance number comes in, so I'm just going to combine and make it all into one, because they both say the same thing. So the notice of public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2023-3, which pursuant to C7-3 of the Town Charter establishes the position of purchasing agent as summarized below. The position of purchasing assistant shall replace, no, this doesn't make sense, shall replace the position of purchasing assistant? Okay. Well, I don't know, that's what the public hearing notice says, and the other section says, the purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2023-4, which pursuant to C7-4 of the Town Charter establishes the position of Director of Social Services parentheses welfare as summarized below. The position of Director of Social Services Welfare shall replace the position of Assistant Social Services Welfare Director. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Office of the Town Clerk and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this eighth day of March 2023. Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk. Email Public Comments to public-commons@townofnorthbranfordct.com, and it was published in The Sound on March 16th, 2023.
I think you have a problem. It certainly doesn't say that the position of Director of
And I'm looking to go back to alter it. Thank you. So that's Earth Day and I was wondering about the, Mike gave me some information that the tax relief ordinance you're working on, I guess we're going to take care of it a little later in the month and getting the budget on the way. Hopefully we get it done so it's not going to go into effect by this July. And just as a side note, at the, at the lunch last Friday, I was talking to the guy next to me because he knows I come to the meetings and I know what's going on. So I was telling him about the tax relief process. And all of a sudden, a woman across the table hands me a petition. So there's about 60 names on a petition that I told him to get over here. So it's not just me talking about it. And I see the agenda come out real late, late today, but you're going to be talking about John's contract again. I'm not, I won't speak for the contract, but I'm here if you got a question or two I could probably answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Make a motion. Make a motion. Get the legal. Coming out yet? Where is the public hearing?
It's in the packet. Public hearing.
Are you going to read it?
Yeah, but first we have to, you have to open it up.
Okay. Okay, it's, we have a public hearing. We're going to open up here at 7:30 now. Proposed ordinance number 2023-3 pursuant to C-7-3, purchasing agent, and proposed ordinance 2023-4 pursuant to C-7-4, director of social services.
Okay. And so I'd like to make a motion to open, well, first I'll read the public hearing, the notice of public hearing. So there were two separate notices of the public hearing. The wording is the same except for where the ordinance number comes in, so I'm just going to combine and make it all into one because they both say the same thing. So the notice of public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2023-3, which pursuant to C-7-3 of the town charter establishes the position of purchasing agent as summarized below. The position of purchasing assistant shall replace, no, this doesn't make sense, shall replace the position of purchasing assistant? Okay. Well, I don't know, that's what the public hearing notice says. And the other section says, the purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2023-4, which pursuant to C-7-4 of the town charter establishes the position of director of social services parentheses welfare as summarized below. The position of director of social services welfare shall replace the position of assistant social services welfare director. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 8th day of March 2023. Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk. Email public comments to public-commons@townofnorthbranfordct.com and it was published in The Sound on March 16th, 2023.
I think you have a problem. It certainly doesn't say that the position of director of purchasing is going to replace the assistant. That's a big technicality and the public wasn't given proper notice. So I would think that you would have to withdraw that one there this time. The second one doesn't seem to be a problem, but you can have the position of purchasing assistant and replace it with another purchasing assistant. And you didn't let the public know technically exactly what you were doing.
Do you have a position on that, Brad?
Was the, was the ordinance attached to the notice? Probably was not published with it.
Yeah, the ordinance was attached to the notice.
Published with it?
Proposed ordinance looks correct, but he's referring to the third line there. It doesn't play this script.
The notice that was published is incorrect. It should say purchasing agent shall replace the position of purchasing assistant.
Since there's no exigency in doing this tonight, I think you should err on the side of caution and.
So don't do either one of them?
No, no, you do the second one.
Okay.
You're fine with the welfare. Just because it doesn't matter, it's the same.
Right.
Salary duties, I would just err on the side of caution.
So then, so do we have to amend the agenda later to establish a public hearing for next, at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
So do you open the public hearing just for social services?
Right. So.
Your motion wasn't accepted, so it's okay for her to make a new motion. Her motion wasn't.
No, I was just reading the notice. I didn't make a motion.
There was no motion made.
I just read the notice of the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're going to dial it back and start over. So we're going to open up a public hearing for the proposed ordinance 2023-4 pursuant to C-7-4, director of social services.
Wait, there's anyone here for us who's here to speak? If not, you can close the public hearing.
We don't, we're not online anymore. We don't, no? Okay. All right, so let's close the public hearing.
Well, we need a motion. I would have a motion to close.
You made a motion to open it. You have to have a motion to close.
So I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Was there a motion to open?
You don't need one.
Okay.
So just quickly, we're just changing the name.
Right.
From purchasing assistant to purchasing agent, even though it's still going to be per.
It's the same job, no increase in salary or anything.
It's the same job, but just changing the type.
Correct.
Okay. Just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's what the problem is, is we aren't clear.
So.
Your second, your motion to close?
Close. I did. First, Counselor Abelson made the motion to close it. And I second.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Onto resignations and appointments.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just want to note that I did provide a memo there. Right, you've got that.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Item A is reappointment of Melissa Pantelio to Economic Development Commission, term to expire 12/31/24.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, reappointment of Stephen Scavo as an alternate to Conservation and Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency, term to expire 5/31/24.
No, 12.
No, that's right.
12/31.
Yeah, I have a.
That's one of the changes.
Oh, wait, so Stephen Scavo is changed?
Yes, it's a term to expire 5/31/24.
Actually, I have an amendment. So I'd like to make that motion, but it's actually, he's not an alternate. He's just, he's a regular member. He is the planning and zoning member to inland wetlands. So he's not an alternate. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Stephen Scavo to Conservation, Inland Wetlands and Watercourse Agency as the planning and zoning member, term to expire 5/31/24.
Second.
Thank you, Rose. Okay. Item C, reappointment of Gerald.
You should vote on that, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
C, reappointment of Gerald Fishback as an alternate to Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
He's not an alternate.
Yeah. That was good. That's a mistake also, some deception. If you want, I'd like to make an appointment, a motion to reappoint Jerry Fishbach to the Conservation, Inland Wetlands, Watercourse Agency as a regular member, term to expire 12/31/23.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks again, Rose. Do I proofread D?
No, the rest are, the rest are going down to L.
All right, so.
All righty.
Your second at that? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Item D, reappointment of Andrew McMillan as an alternate to Ethics Commission, term to expire 12/31/25.
So moved.
Second.
Approved by Rose, seconded by Walter.
Counselor.
Counselor Go, sorry.
Counselor Go to you.
All in favor?
Aye. We'll get you there yet. I can make a motion to re, in block to reappoint all of those listed here with the exception if anybody has any objection. Well, you got to go up to K. Because there's a. With all the reappointments, they're all reappointments, so the motion is in block to reappoint all of these people to the committees that are assigned.
Okay, go up to K. I have a change, I have a change for I.
So up to K.
There's a change in I, there's a change in, there's a.
There's a change in L.
L, it's just an ending.
I should go up to K?
Yes.
And M?
Yeah.
And not L?
Do M, yeah.
Okay. So motion in block to vote in block to reappoint them from F to K and M with the exception of L.
Yep.
Second.
E, well, I think we have to start at E.
From E.
Correct, starting at E.
From E, okay, from E to K plus M with the exception to, of L.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second to that motion? You have a second, you got it.
Yeah. Did you get that, Michelle?
Sure.
Got confidence in that one.
Was there a second? Or am I doing that? Okay.
All right. L, reappointment of Shirley Gagne to Housing Authority, term to expire 6/30/25.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Ben.
So the term to expire was changed?
Yes.
All right, and what is it, six?
6/30.
There's not 31 days.
Yeah.
I thought that when I was typing it in, okay. 2025?
Yes.
Okay. I figured maybe they added a day. I don't know anymore.
All right, moving on to eight unfinished.
Mr. Chairman, you have an N?
Oh, I'm on the other one. That's right.
So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Stephen Scavo as an alternate to Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/25.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Okay. Don't we have a, is it just an there? Was there some?
Yeah, it just an.
Okay. Okay, moving on to eight unfinished business, discussion and action, discussion and action to create a town blueprint, committee to advise, assist, and formulate execution of the town plan and blueprint. Do we have anything on that or should we just leave that on?
I'm just carrying that under unfinished business for your action.
Can I, I'd like to bring up a point.
Yeah.
When we originally talked about doing this, we talked about doing the land, but we also talked about the buildings. And this seems, sounds to me, unless I'm wrong, it sounds like we're only talking about the properties unless when we say property, we also mean building.
My recollection is that you're talking about the properties.
No, I remember saying, when I, when we were doing it in Arfa, that I would agree, I agreed with as long as we were including the town buildings. And I think if we're going to do it, we should be including the town buildings. I mean, for example, we don't know what's going to happen with the, with the current police facility. We, you know, we have a report, original report on a town center with buildings in a certain place. I, to me, if we're going to do this, it should include properties and buildings.
Well, does it?
I don't know what property we define.
Because we don't have any buildings that are on non-town properties. So I mean, if we're looking at all the town properties, it would include properties that include.
Well, because it says in the resolution, the draft, to recommend a plan for the comprehensive use of all town properties. So does that?
Does that mean buildings?
I mean, I think that's kind of inferred, but, you know, certainly if you wanted to clarify in the.
Yeah. I would think town, town properties means everything.
You mean, it means buildings as well?
I would think.
I took it to mean that.
Yeah, this is town, this is town property right now, right?
Well, okay, I just.
It's included within the standard definition of property.
Includes buildings? Okay. I just want to be sure that that's included in it.
And now you've stated it on the record, so it's obvious, you know, you've reaffirmed.
Yep.
Most people suspect it.
No, I honestly, I'm the one that didn't, I just wanted to be sure.
Item B, review of trash recycling contract.
Right. So by way of an update on the status of the bulky waste collection aspects of our refuse collection contract, the council has in their folder tonight a memorandum, excuse me, a memorandum for me with an attachment from John's refuse and recycling. As you're all aware, our current five-year contract requires us to renegotiate the bulky waste collection portion of its four year, of its years, three, four, and five of the five-year contract. My goal is to provide the council with a few options on how to approach this, this topic. Purchasing Assistant Mike Fumiani and I met with Dennis and Stephen Pizzuto to review and negotiate some options that are priced out in the memorandum before you. I've also today forwarded that over to Dan Solentano, who's our liaison with hazardous waste and sent to their chairman, so you should also do that information. But the three options we're pricing out are essentially continuing to do exactly what we've been doing, which is a biannual. I wrote biannual in there, but it's actually biennial, do it twice a year. And à la carte service done by appointment or the creation of a drop-off center in the middle, at their middle town, off Milltown Avenue lock location for drop-off. So these options are respectfully submitted to you for your review and consideration. If there's some additional options that the council might like to explore, such as a combination or variation of some of these options mentioned, I'd be pleased to do so. I'll continue to keep this as an agenda item and after the council's had an opportunity to review what I've submitted, I'd be pleased to get your feedback and your preferred course of action on it.
So, so under option one, when they have the current curbside pickup and they have year one, two, and three, is that really year three, four, and five of the contract?
Correct.
Okay.
So that was, it's the first year of the renegotiation, correct? So that's, so the one there is year three.
Okay.
And the rest respective.
Do, do we know what we're paying right now? Like what was year two in the, like how much?
Two was, year two, first year one and two were flat.
Two were the same.
So they were the same, they were the same price. So these, those numbers that you have there are added on to what we are currently budgeting for refuse collection. And another option that you could look at too, incidentally, is that figure represents doing it twice a year. If you were to choose to do it once a year, of course, that would halve it, but it's another option available to you for your consideration.
Or we could combine.
Or you could combine, you know?
So if we did, like, once a year and then anyone.
Right.
Can pay the, the service.
Right.
That's what I was thinking too. One, once a year pickup and then once a year with the drop-off center to kind of help that out. Franny, what's your take on this? Because I know you have a lot to do with this lot. We don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot either and have stuff piling up in front of people's eyes.
I like option 23, actually. To be honest with you, just, and just, you know, think you have the option to, to bring it, pay for it and. I mean, you know, it, it's not a pretty thing in town, this, you know, even though it's once a year, but if you have the option, everybody asks, I did call all the time about, you know, where can I, where can I bring the, whatever, TV or bulk trash or I should my tech down or, you know, basically you tell them, you know, it's construction material, you get the dumpster, you have the option to go and get away and pay for it.
Yeah, well, Franny, what about people don't have pickup trucks or vans or something to cart this to a drop site?
They're going to have the service to go over there and make an appointment to pick it up.
They'll pick it up at your house.
If you're a senior citizen or whatever and you don't have a pickup truck or you don't have a regular, you call a make appointment with, at John's at this point, and they'll come to you all to pick it up. Is that correct? Is that the way you're correct?
Yeah.
Associated fees, obviously, but.
And it would be direct billing, right, to the, whatever resident, right?
Yeah.
So those that, those that need it would pay for it, those that don't use it at all don't pay for it because it won't be in our contract anyway.
Right. And then there's, there is abuse out there with people that, you know, that, that bring it into their house to get, let's say they're doing a renovation somewhere else. You can see the abuse. It's crazy. And we all pay for it.
So would this be a transfer station? Because I know a while back there was talk about, you know, working on a.
Not our own, it would be John's transfer station. So it would be, it would be work, it would be work with John's at this point.
And there has, there has been discussion about a transfer station and, you know, there, and.
Not doing it.
I think that it's probably a, a good discussion to have, but even if we were to, like, begin that process now, it would take about three years to stand it up. So if we were to want to launch that here, it would take some time to do that. And of course, that, then you're talking about really where the, the contract period is ending. So, but this would sort of be like their transfer station, operating a transfer station there.
And that's going to be a good discussion because it's, it's cost involved. It's not just the.
Right.
Nothing's free. And you got to need employees there. Because you have to, you know, you have to come up there. It's got to be all monitored, scaled, it's an operation.
So John's refuse would be to go to your house and then take it back to a waste station and then weigh it and then send the resident a bill?
Well, I'm not sure.
No, no, the, according to this, it's just a, it's a flat charge if they pick up. $50 service charge and then bulk items, and they have them listed, is $60 per item plus the service charge. So depending on, if you're doing a whole house cleanout, it would be $50 plus $60 per item of the bulk items that they have listed there. So it'd probably cost you a couple hundred dollars, but they don't have to take it anyplace. They just put it out to their curb and, and John's would make, they make an appointment and John's pumps and picks it up.
It's a nice thing that people that have vehicles that could go and drop it off. And there's a lot of people that, that do it all and want to know where we can go and drop off bulk trash. And we give them names for where they can go. Then there's the option that if someone can't do it, they can, they can make an appointment and get it picked up.
Well, and that all, all a part service, you're not limited to April and November.
Right.
You can do it anytime.
That's right.
Can we make an agreement with either Branford, North Haven, to use, or Guilford to use their transfer station instead of having a transfer station?
Well, right now, this would be just what Mike has proposed, is John's.
Right.
Right, but after the fact, that's a whole other discussion yet. And it's going to be tough to get in. I don't know that Branford wants to do that. Guilford and Guilford and Madison are already teamed up. I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying it's going to be a.
You also have to think about location because if you're talking about Guilford, then somebody in Northford is at a greater disadvantage to try to.
Well, we would have to go to, we'd have to do North Haven also. Instead of having the transfer station in town.
Well, they don't even, I don't think North Haven even has a transfer station. We have just the dumpsters outside there, so I don't know how that works either.
Some, my question, for year one, you have a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is that in dit, in addition, that full amount in addition to what we're currently paying? So, it's not like we're currently paying a hundred and this, there's going to be a ten thousand dollar addition to that.
Correct.
So, it's that full amount each year?
Hundred and ten on top of what we're paying now, then year two is a hundred and twenty on top of what we're paying now, then year three is a hundred and thirty on top of what we're paying now. And that's to achieve exactly what we've been doing all along, which is the two full pickups annually.
So, I agree with Ron. What about, instead of years three, four, and five, what about years one and two? What will we pay in the years one and two for this bulk pickup?
It's a.
It was never just those.
Wasn't it inclusive?
It was, it was an inclusive, it was a flat.
The cost is my recollection, there's no breakout in the contract. It was included in years one and two, and then it said years three, four, and five would be subject to future negotiation.
The only concern that I have and is for the citizens of the town, we're, with all the big projects that we have going on, everybody's aware of taxes going up and the mill rate going up and stuff like that. And if it's, if the mill rate has a potential to go up significantly and we're taking services like this away and yet people are still paying more, I think we should take that into consideration too as a service that we provide to the citizens that's included in their, their mill rate and their taxes.
I agree with Ron, yeah. I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's two ways to look at that too. You know, because that's going to put more money out, you know, to require more money outlay, so we're going to need more money from the taxpayers. You know what I mean? That's, that's a.
It's a double-edged sword.
It's something we have to consider.
Right, but it's a big convenience for a lot of people too to wheel something down to the curb as opposed to, you know.
Well, they can, they'll still be able to wheel it down to the curb, you know, like, if we did an, if we.
Did option two.
Option two. And then it all, I mean, think about this too, we got to consider is the people that don't, do not use that service, you know, for them too, you know?
And what happens if somebody doesn't pay that? What's our recourse or what's our course of action to collect the money at that point?
Well, it's not us.
It would be, it would be directly with Johns, it would be theirs to collect.
I mean, with the à la carte, if you use it, use it. If you don't use it, you don't use it. It's just, you're paying for, you're paying for what you use.
Right, Johns will bill you, they're not billing the town, they're billing the.
Direct, direct billing.
That is a good point though, Tommy, I mean.
Yes, I, I think we have to consider all of them. You know, and I think it's going to take a little time for, probably for us to digest all that.
And you might not see as much abuse.
That's, that's another point, yeah.
So, could we, do we know, could we, could we determine that these prices that are listed here under option one, if we only did it once a year, would be half of that?
Yes, that was part of the discussion we had with them.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So, so we can decide this when we do the budget?
Right.
Okay.
And, and they would be willing to walk things together, basically saying if we don't want to do option one anymore, would maybe possibly do two and three as options?
We've begun discussing that with them. I think they're kind of amenable to it. So, I mean, if we wanted to tailor make, if there's something the council really wanted to kind of like, you know, do a hybrid of, say, two and three together, where they have both of the, both of them all at the same time.
Yeah, like both options, I mean.
One, one point of the year and the other during the other, you know, we could, we could get the, the figures on that for you as well.
Yeah, man, I'm just thinking more, I understand the à la carte service for people who want to wheel it to the end of the driveway.
Yeah.
And then there's the people like me who have a truck who it's just as easy to drive it to them and not pay a fifty dollar service charge when I could just go and pay by the pound.
Right.
It'd be nice to have both of those on the table if we're not doing option one.
Right. So, can you just find that out so when we discuss it in budget season that we know that they're agreeable to that?
Hey, Mike, when does the current contract end and then it will begin?
End of the fiscal year.
October?
End of fiscal year.
June.
June thirty. So, we have one bulk pickup left, which is in a couple weeks, in April. As part of the contract.
Cleaning my house up.
Starting now. Starting tonight.
Starting tonight.
Anything else on this one? Okay. C, review of proposed amendment for intermunicipal animal control agreement. I'm still leaving that on the agenda.
So, right, Council of Diamond asked for us to keep those on, which is of course a great idea, and, you know, I plugged in the agreement that was offered from Cosgrove just to refresh your memories on what was before you at the last point. I want to advise the council that we've been in discussions with an alternate provider for our animal control services. Myself, Police Chief Kevin Halloran, Deputy Chief Police Jim Lovelace, and Finance Director Anthony Esposito and I met with this party to have discussions about this, and at this point, we've been presented with a draft proposal that offers some significant savings to the town's taxpayers. So, we hope to have this proposal fine-tuned shortly, whereupon this party will be given an opportunity to make a presentation to the council on their proposal, and they'll propose it to you for your review. And if it's council's pleasure, we can certainly bring back our current provider Branford for a chance to re-present their proposal as well.
Thanks, Mike. All right, any, anything, anyone, anything else on that? No? Moving on to B, we're still working on this, the creation.
You know, I just plugged it in on, you know, I know it's still a long ways out, but if you want to take it off or if you want me to keep it hanging on here.
No, I think we just leave it there. Just leave it, keeps it in front.
Okay.
And to item E, A E, previously approved ARPA projects cost revisions. Good evening.
With some decreases?
I did see a decrease on one.
No, no decreases. January thirty first, you folks were gracious enough to approve several ARPA projects. Three that I want to talk about tonight are revised amounts that exceed what you folks originally approved, the first being the Life PAC fifteen. The quote that we are working with was thirty-six thousand roughly. I contacted her mid-February and low and mid-February first, it was a price increase, forty-two now, forty-one, eight ninety, whatever it is, is that new price. As we're seeing with everything else in life, the longer we procrastinate, the higher costs go and all these different things. Items two and three, Dennis Panome is here tonight, our technology expert to review some of the different costs that are driving the door access system as well as the fiber installation, a little bit higher than we had originally proposed. And in your packet as well, I believe there's a memorandum that Dennis outlines the rationale behind the doors. Again, post-pandemic parts increase, as we found out from the supplier, some of the parts are made in the Ukraine, and the costs significantly increased. There was also some additional doors that Dennis will review on that. And then on the fiber situation, again, we talked back to the gentleman who had made the presentation and cost differential, there's also an option. I invite you as you, we talked about the solar farmer earlier. If you look at across on Forest Road where they put the new telephone poles up, you'll see that there's half poles still there. Snat or Frontier hasn't moved their assets to the new poles yet. Utilities have theirs on top, but the telecommunications has not been moved to the new poles. So, how long have those poles been up? Several months, probably close to six months if not more. So, this gentleman and anybody really can't go on poles until all the telecommunication items are on there. If throughout their exercise of surveying all the poles from MBIS to Stanley T, there are several that may need to be replaced, and if that's the case, and based on what we're seeing on Forest Road now, there could be a significant delay in the telecommunications assets being put on the new poles and thus we can't put our stuff on the new poles. He does have an option, this temporary install, which would allow us to put our equipment up now or sooner, I should say not now, but sooner, resulting in the immediate savings of the leased line at the Board of Ed leases, still would cost us probably some money net, but the risk you run now is the assets, the hardware that we're going to be buying along the road, if we were to secure that now, would be savings versus relying on price escalations that are inevitable in this world we're living in now. So, Alan, Dennis, you want to talk about those two things?
You do a very great job.
So, Anthony, if we purchase, if we purchase the equipment or the fiber.
Yes.
Today, which we should.
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's going to sit until it gets installed.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Well, and that, that's that thirty-six thousand dollar option because it allows us, it allows us, on those half poles you see basically, tack it up on a half pole basis, and then when we, when they get their assets on the big poles that are replaced.
So, the question is, do we, if we mount it on the half poles.
Yep.
Do we have, do we have to move it or does the Frontier?
I think the thirty-six is part of their relocation.
It would be relocating, correct.
So, we have to do it?
Yeah, the electrical has to go first and then utilities, and then, you know, we'll gain as a bonus. We have to wait for all.
Frontier's been busy doing their fiber, so.
I mean.
It's that and supposedly there's also a shortage of telephone poles because they come from like Norway or something.
And they're very expensive.
Shipping and everything else, so.
So, what do you anticipate? What do we anticipate or is there any anticipation of the utilities being moved to the, to the new poles? Before, you know, the. We're at the mercy of Frontier and Comcast and those people, once UI or want, puts the new, if there are new poles needed, as we saw on Forest Road. Yeah. They go on immediately and then the telecommunications folks have to get on, as Dennis mentioned, before this guy can fire on. So, what's the timeframe in that? It's anybody's guess, it's whatever Frontier or Comcast are doing. So, for the thirty-six thousand, they'll put it on now even though there's half poles along the road, and then we'll have to move it to the new poles, but it'll save us, allow us to eliminate the monthly fee that Board of Ed is paying on a leased fiber line. That'll go away now, let's say, where are we now? We're in, end of, say, March, April first. Take a number, a year to do this thing? Say a year. If we do that, remember the ARPA money has to be committed by the end of twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-six. So, we need to make sure that this happens in that window, so the longer we procrastinate and we, and rely on, on utility company to move their assets, which is taking them time. Do we run the risk of exceeding the ARPA timeframe? Do we run the risk of another cost escalation on all this hardware we're buying that makes this all function on both ends? So.
Anthony, if we purchase the equipment and have it stored.
Yes.
Until they finish, is that an option? Because we're actually spending the, we're still spending the ARPA funds.
Right.
But we're, the only problem is, is we, we're paying for the leased lines for.
For Board of Ed.
For Board of Ed. So, is there a, is there a, the price for, the cost for the Board of Ed for a year? Because it's going to take a year.
Right, right, right. I don't remember if you have the numbers in front of you, but the little forty-five hundred?
Eight ninety dollars a month.
Eight ninety a month, Board of Ed pays.
Oh, so we're going to loan the.
Comcast.
The Comcast, they're relocating.
So, that's seventy-two thousand dollars. All right, so, so, so it's seventy-two thousand dollars. So, if we spend thirty-six thousand dollars today.
Right.
So, we're saving thirty-six thousand dollars, basically.
Well. No, I don't think we're saving.
Yeah, because it's nine hundred a month, so it's seventy-two thousand dollars for the year for the Board of Ed. Right? Nine hundred times twelve.
Yeah, it's a decimal point once.
How much?
I think, I think you're off.
Twelve thousand?
Oh, sorry, it's twelve thousand.
Yeah, so I, I think. I see, you're probably saving eighteen, you're spending thirty-six to save eighteen probably, to be honest.
Right.
That's half.
Yeah, about half. But you run the risk of what's, what's your price escalation would be on your, on your switches and things like that. There's already a time, you know, lab time on getting that kind of equipment in. Do you run the risk of cost escalation? Is this going to be the full eighteen thousand delta? Maybe yes, maybe no. But again.
Did he give you a timeframe of, of the equipment if you ordered it today?
The hardware?
Hardware, hardware.
Yeah, the network equipment, it's three to four months at least. They're still waiting for equipment for the iceland. They're going to borrow equipment because they won't be there until June, I think.
So, we're four months away from getting the equipment?
Three, four months to get the equipment, which we can put in now, we don't need to put that in storage. The, the five, there's two vendors, the fiber, he's got sixty miles of fiber and we're out of something, Philomantic or somewhere up there. So, he would allocate the five miles that we need and put it aside. The network equipment we would order could take four, five months and we can install it. The only thing we're going to do is we're going to plug in Comcast and, you know, today and then when the fiber gets ready, then unplug it and plug the fiber in. So, it won't be sitting on the shelf. We'll take it, because everything's going to go up, you know? Labor, they're trying to find, you know, just the, the roadwork and police and everyone to do this, everything's going to go up.
So, the thirty-six thousand, let me just make sure that I understand, is thirty-six thousand would install it, temporarily install it, and when it comes time to move, that price is included to move it to the new poles?
Yes.
So, basically, it's eighteen thousand.
Seventeen thousand net cost to have.
It saves us a year, Dennis, eighteen thousand.
Talking about doors.
Yeah, and the doors, like you said, one of the parts, when we finally got a good quote, because we couldn't get in in time for the January argument, went up like seventy or eighty percent, I thought it was a typo and didn't know it was a Motorola factory in Ukraine and it's here or somewhere else, and it almost doubled the price.
So.
That was part of the increase. And the other part was adding doors, two doors here and the front door at Stanley.
So, we're, we're using Motorola for the, for the, for the, the doors, for the controllers? Or are we using Stanley?
We, the company we use, it's called Open Pass.
Right.
Their own, they're part of Motorola.
Okay, and. Right, okay. I mean, because there's other manufacturers out there. There's Stanley, who manufactures the door controllers also. I mean, they're pretty much big in that. But we're using, because if we're doing it in cloud, right? That's a tough one.
So, the, the option there is the five thousand, right, the expensive, is that noted in? They have that number?
Yeah, that's a, a good point, Dennis' intention. The, one of the reasons you mentioned about the technology budget next year being up, I put the whole five thousand dollar annual fee that's broken into various buildings around town in technology. So, part of that increase from the thirty to the forty-five includes that five thousand, so you're going to pay with it with ARPA funds. It could then be taken out of the technology budget when you do the budget workshops. So, there'll be a little bit of savings on the operating budgets. You're going to use ARPA money for that first year, just another, another wrinkle to it.
So, so do you need a motion?
I would say, yeah.
For each one of those items for the revised amount?
Yes, please.
For the increase?
Yes, please.
On there? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to increase the ARPA funding as follows. On the Life PAC fifteen, increase ARPA funding by six thousand dollars, so the revised amount will be a total of forty-two thousand. The door access system to increase it by fifteen thousand dollars, so the total, the revised cost is forty-five thousand. And the fiber installation to increase it by fifteen thousand, so the revised amount is four hundred thousand. So, it's a total increase of ARPA funding of thirty-six thousand dollars. Second?
Any discussion?
Just, that's thirty-six thousand dollars that's not going to any other organizations in, in our town, and I know the necessity of it, but I kind of feel bad that we have thirty-six thousand dollars less to spread around to, especially our nonprofits who rely, are going to rely on ARPA funds, so I just wanted that for the record.
Then I also think, though, if we don't move, things are going to get even more expensive.
Right. Put the POs in tomorrow, believe me, we'll lock it in and rock it. So, just so, again, so get this, understand this, that's not taking into account the thirty-six thousand.
The temporary.
Temporary attachment. That is correct. Right.[1796.56] That is correct. That's older, you want to, want to do that?
I don't know.
I think it makes sense to do it. That's a separate, separate point, you're right. Be a separate motion if you want to do that.
Well, do you want to do this motion first to increase the ARPA funding for those projects? Because those projects have already been approved.
Yeah, it's already moved to second.
Yeah.
I just, I didn't speak against, I'm just saying I feel bad that we have less money to work with, that's all.
Any other discussion? Do we have a, a motion in a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Okay, we're going to get the equipment.
Now we have to get it installed.
Oh, we got to get the, the purchase order out.
Yeah, do it like now.
We'll lock these things in.
Oh my god.
So.
So there's, there's the issue of the temporary attachment, which is an optional service, which is not included in what we just did.
You are correct.
And so this thirty six thousand dollars, is there enough money in contingency? To take care of this?
Yeah.
If we didn't want to use ARPA funding in order to get the project done, is to, to take this.
Sure.
Contingency instead of. So can we do that? Can you put it on like the next agenda? Because we don't, you don't need this to issue the purchase orders.
No.
On the, on the projects, correct?
Definitely. Perfect.
So if you could bring that forward on a council meeting, to take it out of contingency.
Yeah, I didn't see later on, you got a hundred, you have a hundred fifty five.
Additional thirty six thousand.
So we got.
To do the temporary.
Okay.
So the motion still stands to increase, and then you're looking to have on the next agenda the temporary install.
Yeah, go for the temporary attachment service, the optional temporary attachment service. Okay. Onto new business. Resolution regarding participation with RWA household hazardous waste?
Right, this is just an item we've, we've been in this program through Regional Water Authority for, ever since nineteen ninety. It's time to renew our resolution with them to participate in their hazardous waste collection. It's, you know, due to be done by June thirtieth, but I put it on a little early because I had it here. So just put it before you to, to re-up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution provided, and it's on page thirty eight in our packet, for participation with the RWA household hazardous waste.
Second.
Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passed. Item B. Review and approval of bid specification for bid number twenty three, one oh four, parking lot replacement at Jerome Harrison Elementary School.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bid spec two, three, one oh four, parking lot replacement at Jerome Harrison Elementary School. Second. This, this money here for this bid was approved in last year's budget process in our capital. The Board of Ed did not realize that and ask for the money again in this year's budget. And they never put it out to bid last year. That was the whole reason behind this. So John Florio and myself worked with Michael Fumiati to get the bid specs together so that we can get it out to bid now and get on someone's work schedule with this.
It might end up being more too, right?
Well, that's the whole thing. So I talked to Michael Fumiati and he has the bid specs coming in. They're due in by April twelfth, so that if it's more than the ninety thousand that we allocated, we'll know that before we finalize our budget on April eighteenth. So that if we had to allocate some more money, we can at that point in time.
I have, I have a question. The contingency will be required if bid exceeds one hundred thousand dollars. How does that fit into the motion, Rose?
What did it say?
It says labor materials and something else will be required if the bid price exceeds one hundred thousand dollars.
They have to, because they have to go with prevailing rates if it's over a hundred thousand. So that's, so that would be part of their, their bid specs. If, so if their bid comes in over a hundred thousand dollars, that's one of the requirements that they have to meet. If it's less than a hundred thousand, then that's not. And Michael Fumiati specifically put that in there like that. So that they, so that they know, because the bid specs that we, or the quote that we got last year was for ninety thousand dollars. So it didn't, it was under that threshold, but in case prices have gone up and anything else and it goes over the hundred thousand, he just put that in there so that it doesn't have to go out to bid again.
It's prevailing wage.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just one quick question for Franny. Franny, in the, in the bid spec, it says pave entire area one point five inches of class one binder, hot mix asphalt. And then it says pave entire area with one point five, class two binder. Is that typical, sort of total of three inches?
Yeah, that's typical. I haven't seen this specs and I don't think Victor's doing that either. But, whatever happens here, plus I'm going to check the state bid also because.
Well, I, I think what happened last year from.
What happened last year was they were supposed to be doing some patching and it was supposed to be random stuff. And then all of a sudden Jerome Harrison came in with, and now even talking to Danny, I hear they're possibly adding on to the back parking lot of Jerome Harrison or something. The grass area. So I'm not really familiar with, with the bid is, but.
This is, this is what John had presented last year, just so, last year adding on, that was not all part of this?
Right.
Bid, it was, it's the front, it's the front parking area.
I just need to look, look at the specs a little closer. We put it out to bid, but I will check the state bid on top of it. Because, you know, depending on what the word, it's, it's a full parking lot now. It's not just, it's not patching in just the front parking lot, so, you know.
Do we want to have Franny and Victor take a look at this before we approve it? Just to, just.
I, I think it.
Are you good?
I, well, just what you're saying, but I just need to look at it because, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to be involved at some point. So I just want to make sure what's going on down there. That's all.
So I, I think we can approve it.
Yeah. And I'm just going to double check with the state bid tool and the pricing.
Right. And you and Victor could take a peek at it.
Yeah, I just, you know, because we haven't seen it, so I just, I hate not to, you know, there might be something in there that isn't right. We can make a change on it, but, you know, it could be a dendum to that bid.
Okay.
But to be, you know.
Okay. You, you got that right, the, the motion in the second.
I, I got that, I just am asking if you want that part included in the motion, so it would be pending.
No, it's not, it's not pending.
No.
So, okay, he's just going to review it, it doesn't impact the motion. That's, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. C, financial report.
Good evening again. Financial report. Again, top line revenue, you have ninety nine point four percent of budget compared to ninety eight, ninety eight point six percent last year at this time. Again, just a plug for the women in, in the tax office. As you obviously know, we point at the collector starting in April. And the two ladies there, along with Anita in finance, have really done yeoman's work keeping that department running. And the numbers obviously dictate that. On the expense side of the house, the same departments are over expended consistently. The emergency management, again, relates to the oil tank at MBIS for the generator that had to be drained, sludge removed and refilled. Elderly housing is just a function of the sewer user fee. The audit, we know, Mayor and Council Department. After April first, you can move money around between departments to cover some of those overages. The audit was filed for June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Positive variances of a hundred and seventy one thousand on the revenue side of the house and positive variances of eight hundred and sixty four thousand on the expense side of the house. So favorable. The audit, I imagine Michelle Lozo will be before you guys, probably the second meeting in April, to actually transmit the audit and address any questions or concerns you have. We'll get it out to you before then so you can digest it and at your leisure read it. Is there other comments worthy of this time? Have any questions, have any answered any questions that they asked?
You talk about revenues, where we are, but if you look at the bottom line, are we a little, a little bit behind?
Right, right, you, you're a hundred percent correct. We sent out, we had, you know, Diane Artis from the school comes over annually and brings her students. And they stuff the delinquent notices for us. And in the month of February, which hasn't reflected on here yet, over two thousand delinquent notices were sent out for motor vehicle and personal property taxes. And I was talking to the women over in, in the tax office today. And the percentage that they have captured out of those delinquents is greater than any of the year they previously had. The number may change, but the percentage, so you're going to see a nice increase in the March revenue of your delinquent. Your delinquent revenue is down. You look at three hundred fifty nine thousand of raw numbers, two ninety eight, delinquent interest, two twenty four versus one seventy four. So you're down on those things. I'm anticipating, based on what they're telling me, the results of those delinquent notices, you'll see a nice bump back up in March. Those same students will come back in March and send out demand notices for folks that still have not paid. It's a little more regressive letter saying, February's, delinquent says basically, hey, Tom, you forgot your second payment. You know, you might have left it in the drawer or something, pay up. Most people do. But then if you didn't pay still, you get the demand notice now in March that says, hey, Tom, what are you doing over here? Pay up. If you don't pay then, in April, you get the sheriff knocking on your door for a sixty day. That's the process that we use. And then it goes to a collection agency after that. So I'm anticipating, you're, you're right, bottom line revenue, it does, it's, it's lower than, than last year at this time. Some other items that, that jump out. Those are the two primary ones, is delinquent revenue, delinquent interest, based on, on the amount of delinquent bills we had that went out, delinquent notices in February. So again, anticipating a bump up in March, just bring that back in line.
So, so what are you doing on investment income that were up so high? Considering the market?
Well, it's funny you say that because. The, what we do typically is we ladder out CDs. And I had a CD mature this week that I put out a year ago and got point four.
Whoa. And now.
Back out now at four point three five for a four-year CD. So we're seeing, you know, it's temporarily back up. So as the CDs mature at lower rates, we're putting them back into the ladder, laddering things out. So they mature periodically as our cash flow dictates if we ever needed to dip into those CDs. Fortunately, we just keep that money and just rolling those CDs over and over again. We don't dip into those. But if we ever had to, we have periodically laid out so that it matures in intervals, not all maturing at once kind of thing. But that's, it's just basically the, the, the market is, is in our favor this year.
And the other thing on the, for the audit presentation, so the second meeting in April is when we finalize the budget. And then I don't.
Do you want to come to the, the April one, the public hearing one, or do you want me just till May? I mean, it's up to you guys, I don't know which one.
I, I just, I, I, we tend.
It's later this year because of the whole extensions and nobody bid initially, the whole process got pushed back two months.
We tend to keep the April, the second one a little lighter only because we're finalizing budget on there and I'm not sure.
We hold it off till May.
It's up to the council, but it's.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's.
It's not, it's not critical.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say maybe we should push it to May.
Push it till the first meeting in May.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't want her sitting there through all of our budget.
She likes us, but not that much, right?
Right. I mean, we had a hard enough time getting.
Yeah.
A, a bid for an audit, so I don't want to scare them off.
Any other questions about the report?
Okay, so, thank you, Anthony. Contingency appropriation?
The, if you recall, in twenty one, twenty two, you made some adjustments to the administrator wages. However, the twenty two, twenty three budget had already been adopted by that time. So this is now, you're not giving people these additional raises, it's just the impact of the raises you made in twenty one, twenty two, the ripple impact that it had on twenty two, twenty three's budget.
Make a motion to approve the contingency appropriation. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Tax refunds?
So moved, second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Item F, discussion in action on proposed ordinance twenty, twenty three dash three pursuant to C seven, C seven dash three purchasing agent. Now that we're.
We have to table that.
Tabled that one till.
Second.
Yeah.
That's a motion.
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
The second.
Yep.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. G, discussion in action on proposed ordinance twenty three, twenty twenty three dash four pursuant to C seven, dash four, Director of Social Services.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. All in favor?
You didn't ask for any discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wrestled with this here and I'm trying to figure out, by changing just the title, how does it benefit the town? And what barometer would I use to decide whether or not to support this or not support it? And during the last meeting, the town manager had brought up that at one time, we didn't have a Director of Public Works. And then it was approved that we did get a Director of Public Works. So I went and I did some research. And I did find that according to the North Branford, pursuant to the C seven dash two of the North Branford Town Charter, and in accordance with the nineteen ninety six, ninety seven adopted budget, North Branford Council hereby establishes the position of Director of Public Works. Said position shall replace the Assistant Director of Public Works position and shall become part of the town's classification plan. So I'm saying to myself, what did they use? And I found the description for the Director of Public Works. The Town of North Branford Department of Public Works is responsible for the maintenance and repair of approximately eighty-five miles of roads and town bridges. Additional duties include snow and ice removal, street sweeping, minor roadway reconstruction, storm drainage, installation and maintenance, tree pruning and removal within town rice of way, brush control, paving, chip ceiling and crack ceiling and maintenance of town's vehicles and equipment. The department also maintains town and board of education properties, including athletic fields consisting of over one hundred and thirty acres of town property and twenty-six athletic playing fields. I could certainly support that because that's a lot of work. And yes, they should have somebody because they could have different sites going on. And then I read what a Director of Social Services does, according to the handouts. The position is focused on the day-to-day functions, including planning, organizing, actuating and controlling the operations of the department to include human resources, financial impact, compliance and resources to meet goals and objectives of the department effectively and efficiently. And as a reasonable person, I could see a big difference. But why do we want to change their title and make them a director? According to the town manager, making these changes in titles will make no change in the responsibility, duties, job description or salary for these individuals. It will merely change their title for the job they already do. What's the benefit? What's the benefit to the town? They're not changing the responsibilities. It could be a liability in the future because when time comes, they could say, well, I'm a Director of this and we're going to get comparable wages to Guilford and Clinton and Durham and North Haven. I don't get it. Especially during the 90s when the population was increasing, there was a lot of work going on. Yeah, Director of Public Works was needed. Here, on the consensus online, we've lost 1,000 residents in the past 10 years. I don't get it. I can't support something, we're not changing salary, we're not changing duties, the manager, whether the town manager doesn't have a Director of Social Services, still responsible for what they do anyways. What are we getting by making this person a director? It's a promotion in title, not wages. I don't think the town needs it. I don't see the benefit to the 11,000, 12,000 residents that we have. So I'm against changing the title from Assistant Social Services Director to Director of Social Services. I don't see the benefit. It's not, I can't speak in favor of it.
I believe the town, Mike, you told us that right now technically you are the Director...
Right, it vests me with it, but the...
But the charter allows...
Charter allows for the creation. So when you create the position, essentially by doing this, you make the individual who is already operating at a department level head, operating that department, giving them the appropriate title.
Right, for both. I mean, I know we're not doing the purchasing, but it's the same for both, same...
Same thing applies to both different sections of the charter, obviously.
So it's not only about giving them their title, it's also about lessening your responsibilities or your duties according to the charter?
It's not really because I oversee them in the same regard as I do all other departments. You know, when somebody calls over, he's purchasing, for example, somebody calls looking for the purchasing agent, but Mike has to identify himself as the purchasing assistant. They want to talk to the purchasing agent, but then, of course, I'll just redirect them back to him because technically he's the one overseeing that. I have the same oversight of them as I do every other department. The charter vests me with those titles.
Is it also an acknowledgement of what that...
100%, yeah, 100%. I mean, in Louise Abreen's case, Director, you know, Assistant Director of Social Services, she's been working here over 30 years. And I, and you know, when I look at that, but it's not just about who's got the position now, it's also about the position going forward. It should be a department level head position and that when we look to fill it down the road, because we have to presume she's going to be retiring at some point soon, you know, down the road, we're going to need to fill that. And we're going to need to fill it with somebody who's a department head and they will want it to be the Director of Social Services, not an assistant.
Mike, don't mean to interrupt you. So she is going to be the Director of Social Services?
Correct.
If we pass this, if, when we go to vote on this, if it passes, then yes, we did the public hearing because we have to do it because it's a charter revision. I mean, it's a charter thing that we have to do. So we held the public hearing and everything and now it's up to us to vote if we are in favor of that.
So that person's not going to be the assistant, they're going to be the Director of Social Services. But the town manager is still responsible, there's just a change of, from assistant to director. Doesn't change the duties, doesn't change the responsibility, doesn't change anything.
Correct.
Still falls under the town manager, currently under the town charter. The town manager is technically the Director of Social Services and Director of Purchasing Agent, okay? And don't forget, you already approved to hire an assistant town manager, so you're going to have somebody new coming in. That's going to help alleviate any other duties that are going to help the town manager. So making people, giving them a title and promoting them, you just have more administrators with top-level titles as opposed to people actually do the work and just go serve.
We're going to have more administrators, it's exactly the same number, exactly the same number. And they're not going to be changing their duties, it doesn't alleviate any responsibility on my behalf at all.
I'm going to raise a point of order. He's not a member of the town council, the motion is on the floor. Asking him a question is one thing, he can answer a question, but for him to speak and counter what somebody else is saying at the town council is in violation of Robinson's order. He's not a member of the panel, okay? If somebody asks him a question, he certainly has a right to answer a question. And the question wasn't put to him. So I would certainly don't want to be rude, but that's wrong to allow somebody who's not a member to speak on a motion or counter what one of the council members is saying.
I don't know if that's 100% fair. We leaned on him for an answer as to why he proposed the idea and he was responding to that fact.
Ron, and I said, no, he didn't respond to that. He responded to me saying that creating these titles adds more administrators, that is something that I would say. I didn't ask him a question about that.
All right, counsel, a point taken. So I have, I, so Brian?
Yes, sir.
So how is that handled? Is there something that to handle here?
There's nothing you need to do.
Okay.
Just conduct the meeting.
Okay. So, point taken, but I do have a question. So department heads, we use the term department heads, is there a department?
She's the one department. We have an auxiliary person too, there's a part-time person that comes in part of the year to assist her with processing applications and...
Okay. And then purchasing, is there a department?
There is. It would be Mike and his assistant Cindy, part-time.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then?
I said what I had to say.
No, I just want to make sure...
Call for the question.
I just want to make sure we get everybody's point out.
I'll ask for roll call votes.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
We have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Um, no discussion, let's vote.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Counselor Abelson?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor God?
Yes.
Counselor Mace?
No.
Counselor Palladino?
Yes.
And Counselor Paliccia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Is discussion and action on the budget schedule?
Right. Did we add, did we add that?
No.
Okay, all right, I was going to say.
So there was talk at our last workshop, our budget workshop, of changing our budget schedule. And so we need to formally do that because that budget schedule has already been published. So there's actually two items on that budget schedule that we need to change. The first is our workshops next week on the 28th. So they, the Board of Education was slotted to be at the 6 o'clock slot and they have called and asked if they can switch to 7 o'clock because they have some conflict, scheduling conflict. So I would like to make a motion to move the Board of Education to 7 o'clock and Public Works, who was at 7 o'clock, is going to take the 6 o'clock slot. And that's for the budget workshop next week on the 28th.
So, sorry. I put it in my calendar for next week, originally start for 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock never came up, just...
No, that, the budget workshops were always...
For 6 o'clock?
For 6 o'clock, the budget workshop.
Just, because I, then my error, because I put it in my calendars.
Yeah, the workshops were at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
I'll send them out.
I'll be there, I just, I had it in my calendar for 7 o'clock, so it's...
I think we had originally, it was written down as 7 and then it went back to 6, so...
All right. I selected here.
So the Public Works at 6, Police at 6:30, Board of Education at 7. And this is the budget workshop for next Tuesday.
Where's it going to be at?
Here, Council Chamber.
Board of Ed is here too?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So I made motion in three seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay.
All right, the second change that I would like to make a motion is to cancel the April 12th budget deliberations and move it to April 6th at 7 o'clock, same time, same place, which is 7 o'clock, Council Chambers. Just changing the dates from April 12th to April 6th.
Second? Motion by Counselor Angeloni, second by Counselor Paliccia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 9I. Public, to propose a public hearing for ordinance 2023-3.
Second?
Did you get that, Michelle?
Did you state that?
No, it's just to amend the agenda to add this item now.
Michelle, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Okay. So we're on item I now. I just, what time is the council meeting at 7 and the public hearing on the budget at 8?
This is on the 28th, if I remember.
No, this is for the 4th.
April 4th looks like it.
That's our next council meeting.
It says public hearing 7:00 PM.
Oh, for the, so the budget public hearing is at 7?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, that was normally.
So it's a council meeting at 7 and a public hearing meeting?
But what was published?
I think it was public hearing at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Because that will...
Change that too while you're...
Because that will determine when we set the public hearing for. Or we can just wait on this public hearing and set a date for like after we get done with the budget, if you want. I mean, I think it makes sense to wait. Yeah, so let's, let's make the public hearing, what's our first meeting in May? What's the date? May 2nd. May 2nd, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing date of May 2nd at 7:30 for proposed ordinance 2023-3 establishing the position of purchasing agent.
Second?
Did you get that, Michelle?
7 o'clock?
7:30.
7:30, okay. 7:30, May 2nd.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Can we finish?
Those changes, change we backpedaled. Citizen statements and petitions, nothing. Motion for adjournment?
So moved, second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Diamond, and who's seconded?
Angela.
Oh, thank you.